So we've been talking a lot about different communities within our community and that we all kind of belong to, and then also kind of what some of our community leaders do, which is why we came to visit tonight. And then we've also got two older scouts here that are in Troop 149, also meets there at Bonner Springs United Methodist Church, Wyatt and Tyler. Both of them help us quite often as Boy Scouts coming back and kind of helping out the younger scouts along the way, so we always appreciate when they're with us as well. But just real quick again, Wyatt and then Andrew's here, and Julian, Ryland, Cohen's in the front row, Henry behind him, Justin right here, and then Honor, Alexander, Dalton, and again Tyler Beetz on the end there. Mayor Harrington asked us to lead the pledge of allegiance, so I'm gonna let Alexander handle that part.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and just please remain standing for our indication.
Please, Father, we come before you and we thank you for this city, we thank you for what you are doing in this city, and Father, with these growth payments, the things that we're looking at, these are good things that are happening. And we pray that you continue to lead and guide us as council as we think through, speak through, and then vote through different decisions that we need to make. We thank you for the people here, we thank you for these scouts, we pray that you'd be with them as they see what kind of involvement there needs to be with people in their communities, and we thank you for them, they are our future, watch over them and bless them. Bless us, Lord, in Christ's name I pray.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would I say something to the scouts? Scouts, before you run, now I'm pretty sure some other guys in here were scouts too. I was a scout when I was your age and then a little bit older, and I will tell you that I learned things then that I still use now. And I learned things about how to treat other people that I still use now. So you're at a place where you're picking up lots and lots of good things, I'm glad that you're there.
Let's have a show of hands for all of the Cub Scout Troop 3149 and Boy Scout Troop 149 in Bonner Springs. Let's have a raise of hands. Looks like me and you, there's four of us here from Bonner Springs.
You forgot Girl Scout.
Thank you all. No, just 149 and 314. And who's everybody's basketball team again? Moving along, we'll go ahead and start tonight's agenda with the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the minute, oh, I'm sorry, before we get started, we'll have an opportunity for those of you here in the audience that would like to stand and address the City Council on items not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone here that would like to address the City Council on items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move along to the consent agenda. This includes the minutes for the February 24th City Council meeting, claims for city operation, claims for public housing authority operations, and fourth quarter 2019 financial reports. Anything to be pulled by the citizens, staff, questions from the council? I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second, vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes, with an abstention on check number 142336.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes. You guys moving along, no old business, straight to new business, the first of which is a public hearing for Wilkinson Crane Industrial Revenue Bond. As I understand it, we need to open this public hearing and table it. So we'll go ahead and I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing at 7:41.
So moving. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Very good. So we are at an open public meeting, and I would now entertain a motion to continue this public hearing till March 23rd, 2020 at 7:30 PM.
Second.
Moving to second, all those in favor? Opposed? Very good, it's continued to the next meeting. Onto item number two, ordinance number 2489, authorizing the issuance of approximately $7.5 million general obligation bond, Series 2020-A.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Tyler, I work with the law firm, UTAC Rock, City Bond Council. And at your workshop, David Arndt, your annual advisor, with Steve Nicholas Incorporated, presented you the results of the bond sale and the note sale that we conducted with the city staff, knowing at 11 o'clock, we took bids for both the bonds and the notes. And so in your regular evening, here we are this evening, and before you were requesting consideration of a bond ordinance and a bond resolution, both authorizing the issuance of $7.5 million general obligation bonds, and that's followed by a note resolution for the issuance of $1.73 million general obligation temporary note. As you're aware, I think all of this financing, the bonds and the notes, are for the second phase financing on the insurance service center. Happy to answer any questions. Each of these three documents, bond ordinance, bond resolution, and note resolution, require a separate vote.
Nothing else to add from the staff? Citizens? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 249, authorizing the issuance of GO bond Series 2020-A in the approximate amount of $7,500,000.
Second.
Moving second. Questions, concerns, comments, any, starting over here.
Sir? That's me.
I just wanted to thank you guys for getting together with Trump and coordinating the pilot and all the rates that are skyrocketing downward.
We're trying that nicely.
You did. I mean, I don't think anybody in here is gonna appreciate looking at their 401K today, but as a city official, I appreciate that you guys scheduled that long.
Seeing nothing else, go please.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto item number three, resolution number 2020-3, to prescribe the form and details and authorize delivery of GO bond Series 2020-A in the approximate value, approximate amount of $7.5 million. Anything to add, sir?
None.
Staff? Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2020-3, to prescribe the form and details and authorize the delivery of GO bond Series 2020-A in the approximate amount of $7.5 million.
So you can second additional concerns, concerns, starting over here.
Let's make Bonner again.
Seeing none, vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just recognizing that $400,000 premium does seem as though as savings to the Bonner budget.
Yeah.
It's quite significant.
Yeah, it significantly reduces the other, you have to bar that thing.
That's great.
Or less the interest rate. One two's down to one seven over 20 years, it's a lot of money. That's just what we're going to do.
Yep. On to item number four, resolution number 2020-4, authorizing the issuance of GO temporary note, Series 2020-1, in the amount of $1.73 million. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number 2020-4, authorizing the issuance of GO temporary note Service 2020-1, in the approximate amount of $1,730,000.
Second.
Move in second, and we'll start with questions, concerns, comments.
Anything? Any comments? No? Vote please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto item number five, ordinance number 2490, amending the Kincaid pilot agreement.
Good evening again. We completed, and you'll recall, we completed the Kincaid industrial revenue bond issue late last year, November, December, I think it closed probably the last week of 2019. And so as part of the bond documents, one of the documents that we worked on with the company and our council was a pilot agreement specifying the payment and liability tax of the company, this may occur at a ten-year term of their payment. The way that that pilot agreement was set up to operate was we would use evaluation that Johnson County was property that you don't need. If Johnson County appraisal valued the property as of January versus 2020, to calculate a fixed pilot payment for each year at the ten-year term. Because the property was actually a fairly unique property for an industrial building, it's got a lot more bells and whistles on it because of headquarters, the marketing, the planning, et cetera, there were several discussions that we as staff had with the Johnson County appraisal office as we looked at the value of the property. We finally got a number out of the appraisal, and they set the appraisal value for 2020, they had $14.9 million. We had documented with the company that they had spent hard construction costs, at least $14.9 million, and we agreed to peg the value for purposely calculating pilot payments. We made using the other taxing jurisdictions in the middle of $14.4 million. So this ordinance before the deceiving authorizes the execution of amendment to the pilot agreement that working on $4 million appraisal value and calculated the pilot.
Very good. Anything additional from other staff? Citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2490, amending the pilot agreement for the Kincaid Coach Project.
Moving. Questions, concerns, comments, I think we'll start over here.
I think they've got it covered.
I wanted to mention and thank Mr. Kincaid for, as he was mentioning to me during December, about being a good steward of the pilot program and the, I guess, the trust, the things that we even trusted him with. He didn't seek a reappraisal on his, I guess, some of the property and the ground, there's agricultural credit that he could have got those reappraised, and he could have done a bunch of accounting tricks, and I wanted to like publicly thank him for not doing those creative accounting methods, and that he's kind of set the gold standard for Bonner in what developers and entities should be doing in Bonner and those surrounding areas. That's my case.
My only thought, just the point, we liked it was a negotiated figure that you left with, correct?
It was.
Yeah, and so I thank everybody for cooperating on the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think to Councilmember Mackey's point, the company and their attorney were very reasonable in these discussions.
Very good. Anything else? Vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Please bring us good news. Onto item number six, water system risk analysis agreement.
Good evening, Frank Gabor, Sales Director.
Hey, Frank.
How are you doing tonight? We're out of rolls, so we want to keep this going. I'm here before you asking for some funding approval, I guess, to go ahead and hire a consultant to get some compliance with what could easily be termed as an unfunded mandate. And essentially, in the last quarter, 2018, there was a law passed which requires virtually every water system in the entire country to do risk and resilience analysis, followed up by an emergency response plan, which uses that risk and resiliency analysis. And they've outlined the five or six things that have to go into, you know, each one of those. Essentially, we went out for a request for professional services, I believe we got five, yeah, five proposals received, and we evaluated all of them, and based upon our evaluation, we determined that the person that was on that investor proposal, that was me, and at this point, requesting a motion to approve that contract agreement. We're about to answer any questions.
My pleasure. Very good, thank you. Anything else to add from other staff? Citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a contract agreement requiring McDonald, in the amount of $49,835 for EPA for flying services.
Moving second, questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start again back over here.
Not yet.
Yeah, just a quick question, I noticed in here in Financial Impact, talked about it not to exceed the amount, yet the motion is a fixed, an actual fixed amount, it's not to exceed, so.
You can make a knock to exceed.
Well, no, I didn't know if that's, the contract is, there you are charging that amount?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep. It might be less, but.
Okay, so it could be still less.
But not to exceed.
Okay. That's why I was trying to get that, trying to understand if there was change.
You're gonna have to go cheap.
What is that off video?
Not to exceed.
No change.
This will be completed in 2020, is there a target date for completion of this?
December 1st, generally. We're trying to be done.
That's considerably ahead of the deadline.
Exactly, we have actually until the end of June of next year, but if I waited to budget this in next year and try to crunch all of this in six months.
Gets more expensive.
It, well, would have been a problem, probably too. They got a lot of work to do for what they need to compile.
This is read from, and said the requirements that happened after 9/11?
Oh, I'm not sure what drove it, I think it's mainly because of the risk as they evaluate specifically with the larger systems, their water systems, and then once they started looking at that, they started looking at thousands of smaller systems out there that have even less precautions. And I think, yeah, I think it's a pretty small system that's not affected, you gotta be serving less than 3,300 customers, and that's a pretty small system, so it's covering thousands of systems across the whole country, and it's a lot of consultant work for a lot of companies.
At least we'll be done.
Well, I was wondering if it has anything to do with recycling or anything, that things going into the water?
No, I think what this is, is there, it's more of a homeland security thing, they're looking for different types of breaches and different possibilities. In fact, I'll go so far as, once we get this all developed, I was gonna talk to our city manager, see if there was any interest in having a briefing, but it would have to be a closed session, because even the information that is developed here is not subject to the Freedom of Information Act.
Wow.
And so, yeah, I mean, essentially, we're identifying ways to mess up your water system, and then going through and developing an emergency response plan to address it. And so, this is, it's secure information.
Sir?
Oh, sorry, I'm just bringing everything.
Very good. Anything else? Vote please.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, thank you. Yeah, water's kind of important.
Yeah.
Our next item is authorization to reallocate funds in the 2020 budget to purchase a multi-service vehicle.
Mr. Mayor, fill in that sheet, please. Before you leave, I'm just requesting, in the 2020 budget, we spoke about an armored personnel transport vehicle that was an estimate a little over $300,000. Working with staff throughout 2019, and just also through my own assessment, we found a more significant need for multi-purpose vehicles that exist. So we wanted to come to the council and ask for authorization to use the $50,000 that is earmarked in the 2020 capital budget to fund that, purchase of that vehicle that we identified we're gonna need a lot more frequently. We do understand that this won't meet all the needs that a armored vehicle will meet within the organization, but we could always explore the 1033 program at a later date with the council, if they choose to do so. We'd also ask to use the remaining $16,635 that was in the under-budget amounts from the $180,000 vehicle replacement in the 2020 budget, for a total of $66,635. We'd also like to see about, attempting to trade in the animal control van, maybe the old Fire Department Command post to offset some of those costs. And the total project cost is $62,985, but a purchase and outfit of a vehicle would be a significant savings from $300,000. Answer any questions?
Very good, thank you. Anything else to add from staff? Citizens? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion authorizing the purchase of a utility van from Shawnee Mission Ford for the amount not to exceed $37,985, and authorizing the outfit and installation of equipment by 9/11 Custom for the amount not to exceed $25,000.
Moving second, questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start over here.
You put a Jayhawk on it.
Then it'll make a target practice.
PC button just got hit. I was curious on why Shawnee Mission Ford?
We look at state contract, mark contract, independence contract, and that's, they're the lowest. So in evaluating those contracts, we're already competitive with it.
So North Park doesn't have an ability to do any of those things?
No.
Or anybody, anybody in Wyandotte County at all?
Wyandotte County, I mean, we could ask, what we look at is just, it's the best dollar for the city, and those mark contracts, state contracts, all of them get competitively bid throughout the year. For example, last August, the state contract was awarded, and Shawnee Mission Ford is the lowest that exists for us.
Okay. If it's not any extra expense in the future, can you guys try to ask some of the local guys? Or, I guess, Wyandotte County outfits?
That's it.
Just so that we're including some of our constituents and stuff, because I know a lot of people work at GM and all the crossover there and everything. I was also curious on that, you mentioned a whole bunch of numbers in there, and our motion wasn't close to what you were saying. How did that happen?
I'm sorry.
The motion was for $37,985, and you mentioned $62,000.
Yeah, and then he added $25,000.
Yeah, you're right.
And that would be $62,000.
That's right there.
It's right there. The whole man's got good eyes. Other than acting, other than losing the armored vehicle protection, does it really, then does it supply you with all the other needs that you would require of an armored vehicle, other than the protection?
Yeah, it's transport, and we, I actually talked with Chief Hubble and the new, new assistant chief, James, and it'll meet their needs as well, in case they need to transport large amounts of equipment. Needs to be an emergency ambulance of sorts, we can always utilize it for that, so as that project was presented, you know, latterly across all public safety, it this will function for all.
So the only thing we're giving up is potential protection from the armor. Correct. Okay.
And maybe we could armor the animal control vehicle.
Struck a bunch of careful fish.
Is it gonna look similar to the animal?
No, it just.
I'm not gonna. I'm very supportive, but yeah, but there's, there's opportunities in the future with the 1033 program you may mention, that there's not availability now anyway, so in the future that might be something that meets the needs. I know surrounding communities have those vehicles that you're able to utilize when necessary, but.
No other questions, concerns, comments, vote please.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good.
I was, I was trying to say how very nice the animal control vehicle looks, and I think any vehicle that looked like that would be very nice looking.
It's nice.
Yes. But nicer than animal.
Okay. On, onto our reports, this evening our reports start with the city manager's report.
Just a few things off of my written report, which draw everybody's attention to the citizen survey, several folks, I'm sure and I know, received little survey instruments over the last couple of months, so that data has been compiled by the U5 government. You can drill down to specific neighborhoods, they characterize Bonner Springs as a neighborhood within this, this survey, but it's 7-1 and then 7-2, and the link is available, again, just gives everybody a kind of a sense of well-being, quality of life sort of metrics. Again, that's, that's available currently. Also, just the last thing I wanted to point out, we will be starting our 2021 budget process, that kicks off with a review of the 2019 year departmentally, so we will have that meeting, first meeting, this Wednesday. I did incorrectly say 6:30, I meant, was informed, it's at 6 o'clock, that will be held at the library, so again, this Wednesday, we'll be going through public safety, public works, and then city clerk's office. The next meeting will be on the 25th, following our next regular council meeting at the library, 6 o'clock, and again, that will be pretty much everybody else, with the exception of finance, and then just general administration. So again, I included that calendar for anybody's reference, two weeks ago or four weeks ago, the city manager report, but looking forward to those conversations, and again, public is encouraged, invited to attend that meeting and all subsequent meetings for the 2019 review and the 2021 budget development. That concludes my report.
Very good, thank you, and the meeting will be recorded, so those that aren't able to attend will be able to take advantage of watching that entire, entire meeting. Moving on to city council items, and I, we'll start here.
Just one thing, resident mentioned a warning sign down on 142nd Street, just, just south of Dorkel, there was concern about the speed on that road, and people becoming airborne over that little bridge.
I had a question from somebody in the community, they feel that Route 7 ought to have better crosswalks from Mike Walgreens Corner to the Walmart area, but that's not us, is it? Is it Route 7?
K-7.
K-7.
A state, a state highway, but there is a crosswalk, a lighted crosswalk that crossed it on Kansas Avenue between Walgreens and.
They feel it ought to.
I think what she's saying is they're not marked, it's on the road to signify where the crossing path is.
Yeah. And is that our responsibility or?
I, as a matter of fact, noted that as well, there are supposed to be pathways identified there, so I'm gonna be reaching out to KDOT and just try to figure out exactly what's going on there, and then also keeping in mind too that in the next, oh, it shouldn't be too terribly long, we don't have the scheduled date yet, but the entirety of long, we don't have a scheduled date yet, but the entirety of Kansas Avenue is, still needs to be resurfaced from last year's pavement project, so there are some markings there that I think will also be freshened up in that general area, but yes, I will check with KDOT.
Sean, is that on the east side or the west side?
Both. Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna reach out to KDOT?
I will, yes, I will.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, please, yes, something to add?
I was just gonna add that I have actually reached out to KDOT about doing that intersection in the middle and fill while we're doing both sides of it, and they have not responded yet on whether they want to participate, I mean, we've got publicly, we've got a public bid, got a good price, they're gonna be doing both sides, it would seem to make sense that.
The intersection.
They would just do the whole thing, and then, you know, KDOT would pay whatever that square, square yard price is, but.
And the, I don't know if it warrants being, them being reminded that the last time they resurfaced that highway there, just north of Kansas Avenue on 7 Highway, they used the high tactile asphalt because it was very slick under normal conditions, and they came back with the super sticky, or whatever it's called, and it has remedied the problem immensely, so. That was the thing too, that they were using as a reason for the, making the change there in Kansas. Right, and, and that it had really some reaction.
That was about five years ago.
Yeah.
No, that's, the other thing was, I know we're going to send a letter out to everybody in Bonner saying, here's why the water rates are gonna change and everything, and it will be bulletin for stupid people like me. I wondered, here's my question, I looked at the Table 8 set, Table 8, and there were tremendous changes in the average cost classification, like in, the one on page 54, it had small equipment and tools being $3,130, and then on page 91, Table 8, again.
Is she, is she getting into the, the, you told, which we're gonna have questions after, this is down, call back.
Oh, okay, so, all right, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Any say else?
No.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sir? I have a couple. Nancy Carpenter emailed us around 4 today, I think, reminding us and whomever the heck else was on that email list about the Leavenworth Board of County Commissioners meeting for the, the Nate Sandpit on April 15th. Hopefully, Wind Dot County and Leavenworth remind us or remember that we actually exist this time, I was just curious to ask Sean if they had finally remembered that we exist yet.
I, I can't speak for certain or other or nothing, no. I would assume so, yeah.
If you're a socialist Republican in Wind Dot County, any chance I get? That was one of them, I was gonna mention, I've got my little A-whatever AFP sticker today, I was invited to Topeka for the senate thing, for the, it's kind of Susan Wagle's Shared Parenting Act, Kansas is trying to turn a new leaf over and supporting families, as well as fathers, and since I'm more recently a single dad, then I was, had the pleasure of being there a while, they were talking about it, I didn't get to see the vote, I had to leave before the senate got to vote, or, sorry, the house got to vote, the senate's already passed it, 39 to 1, and I wanted to thank Susan Wagle for that, our senate president, and I also was gonna congratulate Billy Doug, our very own, on stepping up, he's going from House of Representatives to, he's gonna run for senate against Tom Holland, and I saw him today, it was, it was pretty cool to see that Bonner's moving up in the world in many, many ways.
Good. Sir? Bet with the senior citizen advisory committee today, and they're painting the senior center and the senior centers, and they are really thrilled about it, and then it came out, is that the color? The chairlift is working fine for the last two weeks. And what we're kind of beginning to wonder when there's court, we've got like a little, you know, it says, you know, please do not touch, and we kind of are wondering now if people standing there, see if we can move this thing, and that's causing some of the problems. The senior center is having a garage sale, April 25th, and it will be upstairs in the gymnasium, and they're, and very specific, it says, if you bring it and it doesn't sell, take it. They're looking at other fundraisers in the upcoming months, and basically, I'll try to keep you all informed on that. The senior center, you know, senior citizens parking again, you know, has come up, and it's fairly limited anyway, and then when somebody's dropping off a bill, or somebody's coming in talking to one of the staff or something, but I think, as Tom said today, we were talking about it, that, you know, hey, it's just one of those things that we've gotta do the best we can, but, you know, they were told too, that, you know, if you do see anybody out there that's sleeping in their car and it's not, you know, seem that, advise them, and I think Laurie was real pleased that, you know, you, you said that. That's it?
Very good. Mr. Mayor?
I had a resident point out to me that could we, our officers, on, I believe it's court nights, check by the driveways on whatever our main street is? A couple of the residents were saying that whenever the construction started, or even a little bit before that, they happened to only get into the driveways almost every single court night, said that people, they've been parking either directly in front of their driveways, or like far enough to where they can't get into them. Like I said, I can't remember which street it is, but it's right there, it's several of the driveways in front of the courthouse, so if we could just have somebody run by during court and remind people that you can't park in front of a water, or a fire hydrant in driveways.
The mayor's report, don't have a lot to add, we will be meeting with Senator Braun later this week, and I think it's just more for an informative meeting concerning things that are going on, we also have later this week, LKM has a webinar that will be talking about public health with the current state of the parish with coronavirus, we've also asked them to, the city to ask them to review or get a position on continuation of government if the state decides to shut down meetings, public meetings for whatever reason, we'll be moving towards an electronic meeting in some capacity, so we'll be able to maintain all the services and access to it in Bonner Springs that we've always been accustomed to. Other than that, we enjoyed a very successful Marvel Crazy Day, Marvel Crazy, Marvel Day, Marvel Crazy Days, and as well as other events, the Quanis Pancake Breakfast was delicious, with us there.
Some of the virtues I can remember.
And so, other than that, the citizen survey that you may have mentioned of, drilling down through that, has a lot of good information, very similar to information that we've received in our own surveys, not any surprises, but please take advantage of, of a deep dive in that, it's really exciting information, but Mayor CEO Alvy has offered to bring that same roundtable discussion to Bonner Springs, so in talking with Tiny McTaggart, and since both Bonner and Edwardsville have such similar concerns with the unified government, we thought maybe a joint meeting with them and presenting the unified government's situation or concerns to our communities might be a good idea, so we'll be looking into that. They, theirs run through the next month and a half, I think, so it'll be sometime after that.
Before, haven't they had the joint planning center?
That was a, that was a meeting where we had an opportunity to interface, this is more of an opportunity for the county government to give the community their plans, long-range, short-term, goals and objectives, and get input from different parts of the community and how they can better serve them. We, we've never had that opportunity, or our community has never had that opportunity to interface with the county government like that before, and so I think this might be a good opportunity for our two communities to recognize that and have that kind of contact. But it'll be a, a pilot project. See how, see how it goes, but I have no time schedule right now. Other than that, if there's any questions for me, we'll go ahead and ask.
Do you want to close the meeting then?
We'll go ahead, yeah, since it's a workshop, I guess we'll go ahead and close the city council meeting.